Good evening, and I call to order our Tuesday, May 15th, 2018 City Commission Meeting to Order. Let us stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Hines.
Here.
Commissioner Martin.
Here.
Commissioner Vogt.
Here.
Commissioner Short.
Here.
Commissioner Lee.
Here.
Okay, and we next move to announcements. Do we have any announcements this evening?
Good evening, Commissioners. Lorna Swisher with Main Street Pickwa. I'm just here to say thank you. We had, of course, Taste of the Arts, the 24th Annual, this past Friday in downtown Pickwa. I just want to commend the city for the extraordinary work that every single department put into making the event a success. Main Street Pickwa has a dedicated volunteer group that puts together that event, but we simply couldn't do it without the support of the city and many other folks. So, just on behalf of Main Street Pickwa, I just wanted to give a shout out to all the city employees who helped us, and a sincere thank you to every single one of them.
Great. And, Lorna, thank you to you and Main Street Pickwa because it was a lovely evening. It's such a wonderful festival. I call it kind of the beginning of our festival season for the year, and it was wonderful to see so many people out enjoying good food and good fellowship.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Okay, and the next thing we move to are the Resident Pride Awards for the Spring. And so, do we have any of our recipients here this evening? If not, we will, we will go through the pictures. So, we have, the very first one is Jody and Brenda Cozy, 531 Cottage Avenue. And then Paul and Jennifer Herman, 600 North Downing Street. And Lauren Hornstein, 529 Park Avenue. Scott and Kimberly Oglesby, 1701 Nicklin Avenue. Mary Ann Sterling, 727 South Main Street. And those are our Resident Pride Awards for Spring 2018. And, you know how wonderful it is to see our citizens take care of their property? How wonderful it is to see evidence of the hard work that they've done? And we give thanks for the beauty that they have created in their own space in our community, and we encourage others to do that as well. So, congratulations to all of our Resident Pride Award winners this year. We will have pictures and their information down in the lobby displayed for folks to see over the next months. The next thing on our agenda is executive session, and this is an executive session to consider the purchase or sale of property for public purposes. And I need a motion to adjourn to executive session.
Still moved.
Second.
Can we have a roll call, please?
Mayor Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Short?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned to executive session. Okay, we are back in session, and we move to, the first thing on our docket, the consent And our consent agenda tonight is the approval of minutes from the May 1st regular City Commission Meeting.
I move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, the consent agenda passes. Now we move to new business. The first is Resolution Number R-74-18.
A resolution of intent to vacate public right-of-way.
This resolution comes before you as the first step of the process, as requested by the property owner, to vacate an, what is listed as a public alleyway, which you wouldn't know because it sits underneath the, what is known as the Orfelt Building. So, approval of this resolution would allow the Planning Commission to consider the intent to vacate the alleyway. That would happen at their June meeting. If recommended by the Planning Commission, it would come back before City Commission has an ordinance for their approval to vacate the alleyway. As you can tell from the map, the portion of alley is obviously not used for any public use at this time.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution R-74-18.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-75-18.
A resolution to replant part of in-lots 26, 27, 28, and 31, and dedicate a portion of public alley and as street public right-of-way.
These items come before you really to clean up maps from back in 1890. And it relates to in-lots commonly known as what was the Citizens' National Bank Building and what was the Fifth Third Bank Drive-Thru and Lot. So, the first resolution provides small portions of those properties as public right-of-way to the city. This includes an eight-foot section of what really is public alleyway behind the bank building. On the map, it shows as a portion of the bank building. This cleans it up and dedicates it as public right-of-way to the city, and then also includes along Ash Street at the corner of Spring, the public improvements that were done there. So, those two small slivers of land would be dedicated as public right-of-way, as they are used currently.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number 75-18.
Hold on a second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-76-18.
A resolution to quick claim deed city interest in part of in-lots 26, 27, and 28.
So, similar to the previous resolution, this is cleaning up maps from 1890. This is, relates to a three-foot wide section, which would be directly west of what is the Fifth Third Drive-Thru, what was the Fifth Third Drive-Thru. The legal descriptions of these in-lots provide, had overlap, so the map didn't add up really for what should be there. So, this three-foot section cleans up the map, provides them the property that should be for the legal description.
Okay, thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution R-76-18.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-77-18.
A resolution terminating easement for street purposes.
So, this is the final resolution related to this property, cleaning up the legal descriptions. So, currently, the city has an easement for the public improvements that are along Ash Street and at the corner of Spring. With the dedication of that portion as public right-of-way, the easement is no longer necessary. So, this will allow us to terminate the easement.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from our public? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution R-77-18.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-78-18.
A resolution awarding a contract to A to Z Property Maintenance LLC for the sidewalk ADA Compliance Program, Phase Two.
Ms. Haven, I'll write the staff report.
Thank you. Based on the favorable bids that we received as part of our resurfacing program I brought before you a few months ago, we were able to have the additional funds to go out and do additional paving. So, we went it back out to bid. We received three bids for the sidewalk ADA compliance program. We will do this prior to, actually, the next agenda item would be to do the actual resurfacing. But we have to go out and complete all the handicap ADA compliant ramps prior to resurfacing. So, this would award the contract to A to Z Property Maintenance for that work.
Great, thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution Number R-78-18.
Hold on a second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-79-18.
A resolution awarding a contract to Barrett Paving Materials for the 2018 Street Resurfacing Program, Phase Two.
Ms. Haven.
Thank you. This would be for the actual paving of the streets that I have listed in the staff report once the ADA ramps have been installed. Barrett Paving was the apparent low bid on this one. We did receive two bids. They were also the low bid on our first phase of paving, so they are ready to get started. As soon as we can get the ramps in, they will continue with the paving.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from our public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution R-79-18.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-80-18.
A resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned real estate.
The Pickwa Improvement Corporation would like to acquire the property commonly known as the Zollinger Building in order to facilitate future economic development. As you may recall, the city purchased this property as it was identified in the Riverfront Redevelopment Plan as a catalytic property. The purchase price of the property from the city was $165,000. Pickwa Improvement Corporation has agreed to purchase the property for $175,000.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution R-80-18.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Mayor Hines?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Short?
Aye.
Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-81-18.
A resolution to authorize Indian Ridge Section Eight final plat.
This resolution will allow for the continued development of the Indian Ridge subdivision. The item was heard before the Planning Commission on its May 8th meeting. The recommendation is for approval. This resolution finalizes the plat of Section Eight, does include extension of public right-of-way out to North 25A, north of the curve at the intersection of Troy-Sidney Road.
Thank you. I have to say that the Alexanders have been doing wonderful work out there, and it's exciting to see that you are continuing to build. So, that's good for our community. Thank you. Any other questions or comments on this resolution?
Good evening. I'm Rob Alexander with Indian Ridge Builders, 8380 North Union Shelby Road. The map before you is not from 1890, but from 2018. We are very excited to announce this new neighborhood in our community. A neighborhood that we're talking of tonight as Section Eight will be known to us as The Point at Indian Ridge. This is Pickwa's only actively growing residential community, and we are continuing to grow. In the last three years, there have been 22 homes that have been constructed out there. That has brought 14 families into the Pickwa community that were not previously in the city of Pickwa. Our community is locally owned, and our contractors are from Pickwa and the local community, as well as our material providers. We have homes that start at 1,700 square feet and up. We have homes that range in value from $225,000 to one we recently completed in the neighborhood of a half a million dollars. We think it's one of the best-kept secrets in Pickwa. Our neighborhood is really well-known for being very safe. It's extremely convenient to our schools, to our shopping, to I-75 at exit 83. And we have, already have 185 families who call Indian Ridge their home. And sometimes, we want to make sure that people don't forget that we're out there. We are excited that this will allow us an opportunity to create a new entrance into the Indian Ridge community. It will be, as Justin said, just north of the 25A-Troy-Sidney intersection on the north side of Pickwa. And with your approval tonight with this section, we will open up 36 new locations for homes, for families to build homes on. And The Point will create a new image, I think, for the Indian Ridge community as well. We appreciate your support for our neighborhood, and I'd be glad to answer any questions that you have at this time.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. So, any questions on this resolution from the Commission? Any questions from the public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-81-18.
Hold on a second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, the resolution passes. Congratulations. Keep building houses. That's wonderful. Thank you. And now we move to Resolution Number R-82-18.
A resolution requesting authorization to enter into an agreement with FTCNH for the Construction Administration Engineering and RPR Services on the wastewater pump stations replacement and elimination project.
Mr. Melvin.
Thank you, sir. In December this year, we received notice that we're eligible for a 0% loan of $1 million and a $550,000 grant through the Ohio Public Works Commission. As part of this project, we are working, and it's been wonderful, working with O.R. Coling, trying to wrap up and secure our, any easements, any acquisitions, negotiating. So, that's still a part of the puzzle that we're trying to finalize as we speak. We are looking to go out to bids after that's complete. Part of the process is to adhere to our design, and in doing that, we need a construction manager and engineer. They'll have onsite services as well. Through requests for qualifications, we feel that FTCNH meets all those and fits our needs. So, with the $141,000, that includes a 5% contingency plan. And also, currently, we have the PTIs finalized for the Ohio PTA. PTI is permitted to install through the Ohio EPA, so we're looking to get those sent next week as well. So, with your permission, we'd like to bring FTCNH onboard for this project. And we have Rick Miller here with FTCNH with any technical questions.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution?
Yeah, are we going to try and make all these the same so that way we can stock parts, basically stock parts for one that'll fit them all?
Yes, sir. Crane pumps was specified because they're a local business, and they normally have these type of pumps on hand for us. And, of course, we'd want spares if there's a long lead time. So, we definitely want standardization and continuity, which is what we don't have now. We've got a whole menagerie of different styles and all ages.
And the same thing with controls?
Yes.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Backup, backup, the ability to have backup power hookup as well in case there's a power outage, communications that tells us what they're actually doing.
Any other questions from the Commission? We have any questions from our public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution R-82-18.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-83-18.
A resolution requesting authorization to enter into an agreement with Mull and Whitman Architects for the fire station feasibility and facility study.
Ms. Haven.
Thank you. The current fire station was constructed in 1927, and it was remodeled and renovated in 2000 to try to keep up with our fire department's growing needs and the changing of the way we fight fires. However, we've also outgrown that addition or that renovation. So, what we're looking to do is to hire Mull and Whitman to come in and do an evaluation of the current facility, just to see, you know, if there's life left in that for purposes of the fire station, and also to look at some other sites available, one being the car wash across the street, and potentially another site to look at what it would take to construct a new facility off-site. So, we would like to hire them. We did request for proposals, and we received nine of those. Out of that, we narrowed it down to three firms to interview. The selection committee went to multiple fire stations to view each of the different consultants' designs and construction, and we did select one out of that, which was Mull and Whitman. And we would like for them, for the Commission to approve the hiring of them to go ahead and proceed with the feasibility and the facility study tonight.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from the Commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from our public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution R-83-18.
Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-84-18.
A resolution authorizing a street closure for Green Street for the St. Mary Parish Festival.
Ms. Van Horn.
So, the St. Mary's Parish is, they're planning their 47th Parish Festival and are requesting the annual street closing of Green Street between Franklin Street and Broadway. Over the past several years, the city has been notified of multiple complaints against the children's carnival rides and their operators that are placed on the street closing. The 2018 committee is a new committee that I'm working with, and they have made half of the necessary changes to rectify those complaints, but the big one that we need to discuss tonight is the Green Street closing.
I do know that we need to amend this for the dates to say June 8th through Sunday June 10th, so do we need a motion to, we need a motion to amend that to begin with?
I move to amend Resolution R-84-18.
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Okay, so it has been amended.
I know that, at least for the three years that I have sat on commission, I have heard from numerous citizens who live on Green Street that have not been happy that their houses were not accessible. One in particular who has a rental on Green Street. And I know there was some conversation last year about moving it back and forth between Green one time and North the other time. Has that?
So, that was suggested again this year, but due to the logistics of the event, the committee decided that the flow of the event would be disrupted if we had to move it to North Street. And due to power constraints, too, with the power lines, the carnival operators said that they could not be on North Street, is my understanding.
Is, that's because there's power line, are there?
Overhead power lines.
And they're not on Green Street?
They are on Green Street, too. But when I spoke to our power department earlier today, also, they said that it would not be a problem to have it on North Street as well. So, really, it's just what the committee has decided, so.
And I just want to say, I mean, because I have had quite a few conversation, or conversations with homeowners on Green Street who have been frustrated because they've been, not been able to get to their homes. Before, before, is there any other Commission, Commissioner that has any comments?
Well, I can tell you that I know two people that have complained continuously for several years, but, and I've worked the event in the past as well, and it seems to, it seems to be, it works. I mean, I mean, we still get the same complaints, but I know the police have helped, and I've personally talked to both complainants, but there's, you know, how many years has this been going on? Forty-seven, you said?
Forty-seven, yeah. And I'm just saying, I mean, because I have had those complaints as well, so.
And I've had, too, but.
Yeah.
Let me see, you're leaving that.
If we don't have it, if we don't block it, they're going to complain about something anyhow.
Okay. Any other comments from the Commission? I know we have some folks that want to speak about this, so any other comments? Okay, all right, yeah, you guys.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Beverly Brown.
And I'm Jerry Beltier, her brother.
Yeah, we are Beltiers.
I'm sorry, Beverly.
This is the first year that I've been on the committee, and so, this is all new to me. I mean, I've attended the festivals over the years, and, you know, I've moved away, and now I'm back again, so I wasn't aware of all the different things that have been going on. I do want to say, though, one of the complaints was the pony rides, and we are not having them this year. That was close to Broadway and close to the Corner House, and so, those are being eliminated this year, so they won't be there. We talked to the ride guy, and he is putting three of the rides on our property. So, they will be in our parking lot this year and not on the street.
We made a rearrangement of the grounds so that we could put more rides on the property instead of in the street.
And not so many. And not so many in the street, yeah.
And one of the major complaints was Mr. Wilcox did not have driveway.
Access.
Access. And so, what we're going to do is we're going to start on the west side of his driveway, okay? And then we'll move it on down past, in front of the sister's house. And then we, of course, have the big parking lot there on the corner of Franklin and Green. So, that part won't be used. And so, we're condensing it, okay? And one of the other complaints was the power lines on the, on the grass or something. So, we'll move them into the street. So, we're trying to address, you know, this situation. I don't think we can make everybody happy.
You can never make everybody happy.
But on the other hand, we're making concessions so that it'll be better for everybody.
And one, I do have a list of the complaints that were given to me, and a lot of them, we can't do much about, but they were talking about training for the alcohol servers, which we are definitely going to do that and make sure that they are, you know, in compliance with everything. All volunteers will be trained, and wristbands put on each person must be shown before given alcohol, done at another location before entering the beer tent. And we have marked off where the beer area is going to be, so it will be specific. It will be on the school grounds, and we will have a fence all around it with exits and entrances to get in and out. And so, I feel like, you know, that's about all we can do with that. Noise complaints, we're turning the entertainment tent to face the school. I know it's not going to eliminate all the noise, but at least it won't go directly onto Green Street this year. It'll at least go in another direction and maybe not be quite as loud. The behavior of the carnival workers, all I can tell you is I will talk to them and try to keep them in sync. Communication with the neighbors, my husband and I are going to hand-deliver letters to all of the residents so that we can talk to them and kind of assure them that we are trying to do everything we can to make it pleasant for everyone. As far as being able to park on the street, there's nothing I can do about that. I mean, when we have parades and things like that, I've lived in Pickwa, my street's been blocked off, you can't park on it, you know? Those are just things that you have to kind of put up with.
Making that driveway accessible helps, though, right?
Right.
Okay, I appreciate that.
He's the only one that has a driveway that faces Green.
That's a big thing.
The rest of them have an alleyway that they can park behind their house.
That's true. So, making him happy goes a long way.
And the other very loud one is the one right there.
Next to it.
Next to the church, yeah. Which is a rental, so.
Okay.
The big white. Or the big white house?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, one of the complaints that we had were she didn't want the big ride in front of the house or something.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, so...
So, we're going to put a lower one here so that it won't block her view, I guess. I don't know.
Yeah. And lack of city trash collection, I can't do anything about that. I would say the city would have to make recommendations. I'm not sure when their trash collection day is, but...
I think it's Friday. But the thing of it is, don't they collect it in, behind the houses?
On Green Street?
Green Street?
I...
I don't know.
Do we know where they collect? Do they collect? I want to say they collect in the front, but I'm not sure. Does anybody know?
Because I see them in the alleyway.
You see them in the alleyway?
I do maintain it's at the school.
Okay.
I see them over in the alleyway, but I don't see, the sisters have theirs out front, which we can always move down to Franklin Street to have that picked up.
So, is that another one of the complaints, that they couldn't get their trash picked up?
Yeah, that was a lack of city trash collection, access for neighbors. And then...
I wonder if we could have them pick up on Thursday.
We can work with the property owners and with the Health and Sanitation Department to address that.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. And then trespassing and damage to their property, we are going to try and fence off their properties if they request that. And I think Brittany said she could help us with that, fencing off their properties. And I am going to walk by and make sure there is no trash in anybody's yard. I will do that personally. And carnival workers camping onsite, they do have a couple that stay in our parking lot so that they can watch over their things so nothing gets taken. There was a barricade moved last year. This happened once. It won't happen again. We'll make sure that they don't get moved. And I think that's it, yeah.
Well, you know, I have to say, the Pelteer family is pretty large, so if you put Pelteers on their feet up and down Green Street, I think you'll have everything covered, so...
Yeah, we probably could, but, like I said, we are trying to address all of these complaints, and these are the only ones that I was issued. I'm not aware of any others out there, but all I can say is, you know, it happens, and you get inconvenienced. I mean, they, you were talking about repaving, they just did Park Avenue. So, a lot of the people parked in front of my house. I couldn't park in front of my house for three days, you know? So, it happens. It happens with everything, but the festival is very important to us. We count on it every year. We make money on it to help the school and the parish itself, and to see it have to be, you know, minimized and no rides at all or something, I don't know. I mean, we'll try to come up with maybe something else next year, but we've only been on the committee now for three weeks, four weeks.
Somewhere.
You know, they...
Thank you for all the, addressing all the issues.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I don't know how, I mean, because logistically, I mean, you guys are the ones that are mapping it out, but, I mean, the suggestion has been made numerous years of flipping it.
To flip it?
Yeah, to flip it. If that, and I know this year, you've got everything planned out, but if we could...
The way it's laid out right now, we can't break up the kiddie land. And so, you have the rides closer to Green Street, and also have the kiddie land activities.
Because it's in the parking lot.
Right there.
It's in the parking lot, correct. So, now you put rides over here.
You've got to walk through the beer garden to get to the rides.
Exactly. And I don't want that.
Yeah.
And our beer garden, she didn't mention it, we're also putting up signs, you know? Do not cross this with any alcohol. So, we're going to eliminate the cups, you know, being in the bushes and that kind of stuff. But like Beth said, we're going to patrol it and make sure. Now, we do have Pickwa Police coming Saturday night?
And Friday night.
Friday night and Saturday night.
Thank you.
To watch things, you know, in later hours.
Is it possible, though, that you could consider North Street for next year's event?
We will look at that.
We would have to rearrange everything, so...
Okay, you've got a year to plan, right?
Also, the power, you know, the way our festival was set up originally at the church, all the power outlets are behind...
I understand that.
On the south side. So, to put everything on the north side, we'd have to consider portable units.
And the city can help with that. The city can definitely help with that.
But what about the noise levels?
What, the noise level?
Noise levels of the generators, is that going to be an issue?
Well, I think you're going to have the noise level on one side or the other.
Or the other, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's just a given.
It's just giving relief to the same people that are getting, giving us the complaints year after year and considering...
And that's my only issue, is because we have heard the complaints and flipping it back and forth and making it equal for one street or the other, and the city can work with you on the, that would be my only...
On the power lines, they can work with us, too?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. Okay. I can live with that.
Yeah.
We're not opposed.
Yay! And let's hope, let's hope we have beautiful weather.
Let's hope, yeah.
We took the chairmanship late, okay? And...
Well, bless you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the people that were running it before, you know, they said last year that that was going to be their last year, so, but no one stepped up. So, then, you know, we didn't have a lot of time, okay? So, now, next year, we'll start planning right away because we plan to continue on with this. It's the biggest fundraiser we have.
Yep.
And it's very important, especially for the school.
I agree.
So, that's why, you know, we need Green Street this year.
This year, yep.
At least this year.
At least.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the commission? Anything else from our public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Still move.
Second.
Has been moved and seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-85-18.
A resolution authorizing the sale of city-owned real estate.
So, the city was approached by an adjacent property owner for two parcels that the city owns on Roosevelt Avenue. Both parcels are small, not of public use. We maintain them, but don't have any plans for any development. One for sure is a non-conforming lot. So, the adjacent property owner does have plans to expand their business operations, at least onto one of the parcels. We have agreed to a purchase price of the two parcels that, again, are not of use for the public, so the recommendation is for approval of this resolution.
Okay. Any questions or comments on this resolution? Any questions or comments from our public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to adopt Resolution R-85-18.
Say it.
Has been moved and seconded. Can we have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Martin?
Aye.
Commissioner Vogt?
Aye.
Commissioner Lee?
Aye.
Commissioner Short?
Aye.
Mayor Hines?
Aye. Okay, the resolution passes. And now we move to Resolution Number R-86-18.
A resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into a lease agreement to permit the usage of the Pickwa Veterans Memorial Park to the Pickwa Veterans Association.
Ms. Van Horn.
The Memorial Day Parade ends at the Veterans Memorial Park for a one-hour ceremony, so they're just requesting exclusive use of that park for that one hour.
Okay, makes sense. Any questions or comments from the commission on this resolution? Any questions or comments from our public on this resolution? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I moved to adopt Resolution R-86-18. Second.
It has been moved and seconded. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? The resolution passes. And now we move to the public comment portion of our meeting. Do we have anyone here for public comment this evening? If not, we will move to our city manager's report, or assistant city manager's report.
You have heard from me enough this evening. I have nothing further.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Lee, do you have anything to share this evening?
I just want to congratulate all the Citizen Resident Pride Award winners. The residents looked fabulous, and I'll pay any of them to come do mine, so it looks like that. Again, I want to thank Lorna Swisher for Taste of the Arts. I was not able to make it. I was out of town, but I heard it was great and from a lot of people, and a lot of positive comments on Facebook. And I want to congratulate all the Rotary Scholarship winners. My son was one, but there were a lot of them, and I want to congratulate all of them. So, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Short?
Yeah, just one thing. May fifteenth, that's National Law Enforcement Memorial Day, so if you take the time, if you wonder why the flags are half-staffed, that's the reason why, so just thankful that we have an awesome police force in the city of Pickwa.
We do.
That's it for me.
That's right. Commissioner Vogt?
Well, back to the same old thing. Stop blowing your grass in the street when you mow the yard. It's dangerous. It clogs up the sewers. And next meeting, I will have a list of all the ones that I see. I will announce you publicly who's blowing the grass in the street. Now, there are a couple commercial care, people doing this also. So, I hope we don't have to have an ordinance or something like this because it's horrible to see it in the street, and it clogs up the storm sewers and everything else. So, let's see if we can fix that this year. And I'd like to congratulate the Resident Pride winners. People are doing a good job taking care of their houses, and the Taste of the Arts was a success. We controlled the weather real good on that one this year because it's the first time it didn't rain in how many years? So, that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Martin?
Yeah, I'd like to echo everybody's sentiments tonight, and then I only have one thing, and this is for the chief. What do the police do when they go by somebody that's blowing grass into the street? Do they stop, cite them, tell them, hey, this is illegal to do?
No, we do not.
There's not an ordinance.
There's a law in the state of Ohio over this. I read it somewhere, but I can't remember where I read it at, or I'd tell you where I saw it. But I could swear that, it made, okay, it made it sound like there's an actual law that says that it's a safety issue for everybody that has to go across that area, like motorcycles, bicycles, people that basically run around on the streets, it makes it a safety issue. So, could we look into that, and if it is...
Why don't you bring me what you're talking about? Because I can think of several laws that are designed for that, but grass isn't the same as placing an object in the street that is going to interfere with traffic or cause safety concerns. So, if I could see whatever it is you read, we could discuss it then.
Okay, that'll work.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. And that's it.
Okay.
This afternoon, or this morning, I was part of the Click It or Ticket campaign that happens every year, and this year was at Upper Valley Career Center. They do a seatbelt count on a day with the high schools, and Troy Christian won the seatbelt count this year. Pickwa High School was part of that, as well as Upper Valley Career Center, and I just put a challenge out to both of those schools to try to get the first place for the number of folks wearing seatbelts on seatbelt count day, but not only that day, but every day as well. It definitely is important that we use our seatbelts. We hear too many times in the news of tragedies from people who unfortunately have lost their lives because they have not been using seatbelts.